The city has a great planning firm, DMR Architects and Planning. Lloyd Rosenberg and our planner is Fran Reiner. They do a wonderful job in the city of Hackensack. And recently, we received a wonderful award for the reuse of the Masonic Lodge, turning it into a beautiful performing arts center. It was given to us by the Bergen County Historical Society. And it was quite an honor. It was a very nice ceremony that night. So I'll read the proclamation and it reads, "Whereas DMR Architects is a top New Jersey architectural and urban design firm dedicated to progressive, innovative, and sustainable design. And whereas the purchase and rehabilitation of the Masonic Temple was one of the first projects that the city of Hackensack embarked on after adopting its downtown rehabilitation plan in 2012. And whereas the repurpose of the Masonic Temple into the Hackensack Performing Arts Center was a watershed moment that resulted in attracting dozens of real estate developers to invest in Hackensack's revival. Since then, DMR's creativity and ingenuity can be seen all over Hackensack from new traffic patterns to the new open spaces and residential communities coming online every day. And whereas the project maintained the look and feel of a 140-year-old building while bringing it up to modern safety and accessibility standards. And whereas DMR Architects shares in the vision of an artistic and culturally rich community and has made generous contributions towards the establishment and rehabilitation of the Hackensack Performing Arts Center, and the city of Hackensack is very grateful for their support in this initiative and the overall revitalization of our city." And now therefore, I, John P. LeBrosse Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, acknowledge and commend DMR Architects' ongoing commitment to the well-being and future of our great city. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it.
(applause)
(inaudible)
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 All right, now we have a very important one. As you know, it's National Military Appreciation Month, which all of us should hold near and dear. I'm going to ask Command Sergeant Major Retired Roosevelt Sills to please come forward. And this one's, if I get winded or need to take a break, it's quite a long proclamation, but rightfully so. And it reads as this, "How are you, sir? Honored to see you again. Whereas the month of May is National Military Appreciation Month, and we would like to honor Command Sergeant Major Retired Roosevelt Sills. And whereas Roosevelt Sills enlisted in the United States Army in September of 1970, he attended basic training at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, advanced individual training at Fort Sill, Oklahoma." Did they name that after you? (laughing) That's pretty good. "And Airborne School at Fort Benning, Georgia. And whereas CSM Sills military training included but was not limited to airborne school at Fort Benning, Georgia, British airborne traffic training in England, Drill Sergeant School at Fort Dix, New Jersey, and United States Army Sergeant's Major Academy at Fort Bliss, Texas. And whereas CSM Sill was ordered to active duty during Desert Shield, Desert Storm as the Battalion Sergeant Major, 1-310, 1-310 Second Brigade, 78th Division Training, where after the Gulf War, CSM Sill served as Bridge Command Sergeant Major for the Second Brigade, 78th Division Training, and then as a Brigade Command Sergeant Major, Second Brigade, 76th Division Training in Lodi, New Jersey. And whereas CSM Sills was awarded many medals such as the Legion Merit, the Meritorious Service Medal with three oak leaf cluster, Army Commendation Medal with three oak leaf clusters, Army Achievement Medal with four oak leaf clusters, National Defense Service Medal with Bronze Star, Vietnam Service Ribbon, Armed Forces Reserve Medal. And whereas upon his release from active duty, CSM Sills joined the United States Army Reserve and served in numerous leadership and staff positions in the 78th Division. Whereas CSM Sills recently graduated from the Ministry Training Academy at Covenant Life Ministries Church in March of 2017, he now serves on the leadership team of Covenant Life Industries Church in Teaneck, New Jersey, where he now resides with his wife, Ramona, and they have two daughters, Tiffany and Tiki. One granddaughter, Talia, and two grandsons, A.J. and A.D. Now therefore, I, John P. LeBrosse Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the other members of this city council, hereby extend our gratitude to Command Sergeant Major Retired Roosevelt Sills for his service to our nation. Thank you, sir." (applause)
(inaudible)
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 This is, when I first left high school, I first arrived here 1970, before I went into the military in Hackensack, New Jersey. And I always used to wonder, what in the world, where is that place is at? But anyway, it was very nice coming here because I met my wife the same year when I returned back from the military. We got married and then we had the two beautiful daughters, Tiffany and Tiki. And from them, we got all the beautiful grandchildren. And my beautiful, wonderful sister-in-law is also here tonight. I thank them for being here. And brother-in-law here also. But Hackensack has been special because I stayed in Hackensack many years before I moved to Teaneck. And I always had a wonderful time in Hackensack. And believe it or not, when I first got out of the service, the authority here in Teaneck and Hackensack were very nice to me. Because during that period, when you're really honored as soldiers who come back from Vietnam, I do thank Hackensack in many, many ways. And I do thank the council, and I thank the mayor, and the deputy mayor, and the council here in Hackensack for recognizing me here tonight. And I remember praying for this particular team right here at Hackensack Leadership of Hackensack a couple of times in their campaigning effort. And my prayer would answer it. Just, this is who you got. You can blame me for it, okay?[488.12][488.12](laughing) Because that's the team right here that are leading, leadership of leading Hackensack today. But thank you very much, and thank you to Hackensack to also recognize me here tonight. Thank you, sir. (applause)
(inaudible)
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 All right.
(inaudible)
Okay, with that, we'll go to the city manager's report, please.
No. Approval of minutes?
No, the approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular and Cal meeting for April 24th, 2018?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, city manager's report.
Yes. We leave me mayor and council and invite a guest. This is the city manager's report for May 22nd, 2018. First, the Memorial Day wreath laying will be held on May 28th at 10:00 a.m. at Veterans Park on Hudson Street. We encourage people to come to show their respect. Two, two-day garbage collection will begin the week of May 28th. Hang tags have been distributed by the sanitation department. Three, pothole repairs are still underway. We are doing our best to address any and all potholes reported. As of today, we've used 118,000 tons of asphalt. We have a very extensive list of streets that, if anybody's interested, we're still compiling. The city is gearing up for the Fourth of July spectacular celebration. Letters for donation and participation by local businesses and residents have been sent out. We're looking forward to another successful event. Flyers and more details to come. Six, summer camp reminder, registrations are still going on until June 15th. Please refer to the hackensack.org under headlines for registration details. Seven, H-Pac Music Festival is May 26th at 7:00 p.m. Please refer to your hpac.org for show details and ticket information. The building apartment update, 194 notices, 91 inspections made, and zero summons is issued at this date. For the last two weeks, there have been no flooding issues reported to the city manager's office. That would complete the city manager's report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Start business. Resolution 195-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 19-2018, a bond ordinance providing for the removal of underground storage tanks and soil remediation at a city-owned parking lot, and the replacement of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units at the municipal port by and in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, appropriating $580,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $552,300 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for public hearing.
Need a motion to open the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance, in this ordinance only, please come forward.
Good evening, Kathleen Servo, 47th Lot, Hackett, Hackensack. What city-owned parking lot are we talking about?
By Tech, Tabory, Naperville.
On Bridge Street and Mord.
What is it?
Small lot by Bridge and Mord.
Bridge and Mord?
Is that Mord where it comes down? Yes.
And we own that parking lot?
Yes.
Yes, municipal parking lot.
And how come that wasn't taken care of when it was made a parking lot? We just found this out now?
We wish. We only wish.
We wish.
Because usually when we make parking lots, we take care of that problem.
That tank was in there from a long, long time ago.
So it's Bridge and Mord, and we have to pay for it, okay? Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else from the public on this ordinance?
Favorite, Joe Campania, 336th Street, Hackensack. I'm in favor of that cleanup, definitely. And I'm hoping that the city doesn't sell that lot, that they'll use it for another purpose, which I'll disclose in a letter another time. I was just discussing that earlier, but I hope the city does not sell that lot because it could, and if the city does sell a lot, or keeps it, hopefully they'll keep it for parking because we need parking, there'll be something set aside which will be disclosed at a later time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public? Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Deb?
Be resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 19-2018 has passed a second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 196-18.
This is a resolution designating a redeveloper and authorizing a redevelopment agreement with Wakepoint Hackensack Urban Renewal Owner LLC.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Take them. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 197-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 20-2018, an ordinance authorizing a 30-year tax exemption for a market-rate rental apartment project to be constructed by Wakepoint Hackensack Urban Renewal Owner LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 40A:2022@SEC.
Need a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 20-2018 as introduced is now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on June 12th, 2018, at 8 o'clock p.m. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized a director to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 198-18.
This is a resolution authorizing a tax refund for overpayment.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Resolution 199-18.
Resolution authorizing settlement of litigation entitled Clarence Brown versus City of Hackensack Claim Petition 2016-1908 pending in the New Jersey Division of Workers' Compensation.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Resolution 200-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the city of Hackensack tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills in accordance with PL 1994-C72.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Resolution 201-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of an emergency contract to all county mechanical contracting for services related to the replacement of the HVAC unit in the municipal court complex.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolution 202-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of an emergency contract to HBC Company for services related to the replacement of the HVAC unit in the municipal court complex.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? 203-18.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services, HVAC replacement in municipal court complex to Brightview Engineering.
I need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? For 10, resolution 204-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of contract to Arcadis U.S. Inc. for engineering services for underground storage tank closure and removal at 18-22 Bridge Street Project.
I need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None? Zero? Resolution 205-18.
This is a resolution authorizing non-retirement accrued time payout of $61,799.25 to fire Chief Thomas Freeman.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Resolution 206-18.
This is a resolution awarding New Jersey State contract for the purchase of a police in-car video system.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolution 207-18.
A resolution authorizing Kaufman, Semiraro, and Liebman, LLP, to represent the interests of certain individual defendants in Ziza versus Haveland et al., docket number 2:17-CV5551-JMVCLW.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We're pulling the next one? No. We're pulling Resolution 208-18. Going right to Resolution 209-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And consent agenda, does anybody have a conflict of any time with, kind with the four resolutions within the consent agenda?
Uh-uh.
No? Okay.
No.
Need a motion to read the consent agenda, or to accept the consent, excuse me, to accept the consent agenda, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
The consent agenda consisted of the following items, which are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consisted of Resolution 210-18 through 213-18. 210-18 was a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 62 Summit Avenue in the amount of $2,402.50. Resolution 211-18 was a resolution authorizing the award of bid contract for 2018 Summer Food Grant Program to New Way Concessionaires, Inc. Resolution 212-18 was a resolution supportive adoption of A 3736 into New Jersey state law. And Resolution 213-18 was a resolution authorizing temporary extension to city park closing hours on a trial basis from Memorial Day 2018, ending on Labor Day 2018.
Okay. That's it? Need a motion to open this to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Larry Eisen. Just clarification on Resolution 206-18. Purchase of a police in-car video system?
Yes.
Is a system for all the police cars or one police car?
I will let the city manager know.
The city had not, previous to this event, had in-car cameras for marked patrol cars. So through the efforts of the approval of the Bergen County Prosecutor, the city will be purchasing in-car cameras for all of our marked cars so we can record the actions of motorists and also our police officers. So that's what that approval's for. So it's more than one? Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just for the patrol cars themselves.
For marked patrol cars.
For marked cars.
Oh, terrific.
Yeah.
The second item, I, there was a, an opinion section in the record today regarding the use of plastic shopping bags. I don't know how many of you may or may not have seen it.
I saw.
The damage to the environment by plastic shopping bags is enormous. And many towns in New Jersey have banned them and are going to other forms of shopping bags. My wife, for example, brings her own cloth bags because she's conscientious about that. I think it is something that the council should consider. I I know you can't just vote on it, but you might need some time to study it. But I think Hackensack should be at the forefront of this movement and look into the possibility of banning plastic shopping bags. We have many, many retailers in town. I have no idea how many plastic shopping bags they generate, but it has got to be hundreds of thousands. And I think we as a city should not contribute to this destruction of the environment. I thank you.
That's something I think this council would definitely like to look into. Any comments on that?
Maybe something good for the environmental commission to.
Yeah, that that would be good for our environment. Good idea.
Give us some more information, that would be great.
If you notice, when you go to Costco or PJs, there are no bags. Period. Next, please.
Yes, Maine Frye, Saint Germain, one twenty-seven Hudson Street. I'm here tonight because I know I ain't gonna get no justice from Judge Nies or your crooked Hackensack cops. But the feds know and Murphy people know, y'all don't know who I am, but I deal with all kind of people in this world. Because if I want to meet anybody in this world, any race, any religious, and talk to somebody, they ran across that water in New York City like I keep telling you. That's wrong with you people. You people think you're smart, you don't know what's going on. But long story short, July Olander in that shelter over there, Hackensack, you need to go. Need to tell the prosecutor when they can to get them dogs, them canines, and go up in that shelter like one o'clock in the morning or four o'clock in the morning when everybody in there, when they drinking up in there, they doing drugs, and they partying in that shelter. That's all it is, a crack house and an alcoholic house for AA people. It's people, it's people coming to me right, I just had a guy on Hasbro Heights like an hour ago told me how she put him out because of a man got knives up under his bed, and she reported in. The people that need to be in that shelter, they got jobs and doing for themselves can't get in there, but she letting drug addicts up in there, and she want a favoritism. Yeah, she put me out two thousand fifteen in the freezing cold, but see, I'm a survivor. I'm Jesus Christ, brother, you ain't gonna stop me, nobody. But you need to get out of here. I'm a regulate, like I told Murphy yesterday, I'm a regulate, New Jersey's mine. You think it's a problem, call Montgomery, Alabama, ask former guy Hunter about me, since a little boy, since eight years old down there. Ask, call Judge Rice in Circuit Court, Judge in Bruton, Alabama, ask about me. I ain't take off them people down in Alabama, I'd have been around this country, this is where I'm born. I ain't running nowhere. Y'all might got, set my cousin up Shawn board, you might run my cousin Marvin Carter away, but you ain't gonna run me away, not where I'm born, nineteen seventy-four, right here in Hackensack. But this country, I'm gonna give it back, y'all, y'all local there, the Native Americans, that's who I'm gonna give it back to. I got big plans for y'all in this country, and that's amen.
Next, please.
I hope you'll be happy to see me, I bet. Blessing is let sleeping dogs lie, John, and that's why I'm here. I understand there's a policy regarding this camera, like if I look at the camera, he's instructed to drop it, is that correct?
I will let the attorney answer that.
As we, as we have repeatedly said, when you address the council, as you know, as an attorney, you are to address the presiding officer. You are not to address the camera. It's as simple as that. It's in our city code, it's the respect that's deserved. It's as simple as that.
Except it's not in the city code, Stephen. You are misreading it, and let's, let's look at the city code, because what the opinion you have given is an opinion of convenience, and you are basing policies on a law, an ordinance that does not exist. Let's follow.
If the remarks are not addressed to the, are addressed to the camera, they're not addressed to the presiding officer.
Timing when he's.
It's as simple as that.
Well, it's not as simple as that. You're misquoting, you're misinterpreting.
One at a time, let's go back and forth, Mr. Salk can read his piece, and then you can, after his three minutes is up, then you can comment.
When does my three minutes start, John?
You can give him an extra twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds, very generous. Procedure, public comment. Section F. All remarks shall be directed to the presiding officer, semicolon. Very important, does everybody know what a semicolon is? Look at the camera. It's, it connects two independent clauses that are closer in meaning than a ordinary comma. Because after that, all remarks shall be directed at the presiding officer. A participant may not address or question council members individually. That's all that says, that's common. I can't say, Ms. Ann Rudenberg, isn't it true that, you know, if you lie down with dogs, you get fleas? I gotta go through the chair, that's all that means. You have based a policy, and I agree with Regina, you may very well be skirting the area of of a violation of people's civil rights because you get your picture on it. Richard Servo gets up here and says, welcome, you should be down here, that's all the man does. You, you admonish him. Carlos Velez, your candidate, turns around, plays to the audience, that's okay. It's wrong and it's illegal, and your interpretation, and you know it, Stephen, is a hundred percent incorrect.
I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Salkin. Suffice it to say that you are not here to address the public or the camera, you are here to address the council on matters of importance.
You're here to express, you're here to express your First Amendment rights.
To the council, sir, to the council.
Go back and forth, you can take it offline. Next, please.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Servo, how are you?
I'm Rich Servo, I'm, I'm residing at forty-six Spring Valley Ave, Hackensack. You know, uh, back, uh, back to biblical times, I think it was Matthew or, um, one of the other apostles. And also, our founding fathers always mentioned, uh, the caring for the least among us, you know, the, the poor, the needy, those that don't have. And so I, I just want to start by saying that, that, um, everyone is so well-paid in the city, no question. There's, I, I, I've, I've seen some salary lists, I, I've seen, um, you know, what people benefit by working for the city. You have been munificent in your giveaways to people digging holes and building buildings, so that's also, uh, very generous. And, uh, there's, there's a lot of, uh, well-to-do in the city. There's, you're spending our money lavishly, okay? But every time I'm in Hackensack, on Main Street, on State Street, maybe it's a coincidence, I don't think so, but I see guys looking in garbage cans, okay? And it's just, it's just really, it's, it's, it makes you stop and wonder, like, wow, what is going on? When we're paying people, when we're paying people lavish salaries, I think, for, for their services in the city, okay? So I, I just, I just wanted to bring that up, and maybe you could, uh, kind of think about that next time you negotiate something, or negotiate contracts, or, or spend our money to, uh, have one of your projects, uh, get off the ground, okay? Also, I just wanted to, uh, mention the, uh, the roads, okay? Now, I don't know when the roads are gonna be, uh, improved again, but I know there's a holdup because of the, the two-way project. But Main Street is actually dangerous to drive down, okay? Your car is, is, is taking some hits on that road. That is, is a danger to any part of your, your wheel alignment or any, any kind of, uh, problem. So please, Hackensack, uh, Main Street is horrendous. It's, I mean, it's, it's gotta be cutting down on business at this point, that's how bad it is. And I, I'm not sure how, how long this project's gonna take. I know it's gotten off the ground with State Street, but Main Street is, you know, just undrivable, if that's, if that's, if that's a word. And it's, it's gotta be hurting business down there, it really does. And so please, uh, let's, let's get, get that up to speed, and I, I would appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you. I will say this, Main Street hopefully will be done by, what do we think, in fall?
That would be the hope.
That's, that's when we're aiming. The great Main Street is bad, but, uh, wouldn't make sense to pave and then tear it back up again, so we're bearing with it, we will fix the potholes on it though. Sir, you're next.
Good evening, council. I'm addressing the council, when I'm addressing the council, I'm addressing the people of Hackensack, okay? People of Hackensack voted for the council, the people have a right, and the council has a right to look at me in the eye and see my, my facial expressions, and it really doesn't matter where I look, okay? Now I want to talk about, uh, Charcoal Corners, if anyone remembers Charcoal Corners. It was a place where the main drag, when I was a little kid, I used to ride my uncle's car, we used to drive to the library, drive around the library, drive around Charcoal Corners, go back up and down Main Street, and the cars used to show off their new mag wheels. I, I, I respectfully request, we have a car show, we used to have the car show in the lot near the courthouse, we should have a real car show and have judges, you know, along Main Street, the people could vote on it, and have a car show, a moving car show going up and down Main Street once a year. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the problem with the, um, uh, various barbecue, commercial barbecue places. You, you were given the information, it's factual information, it's harmful to people, long, so, long-term exposure, even short exposure for people who are vulnerable. Now, we need to get electrostatic air precipitators in the requirements for city code for anything new, and maybe we can do a GoFundMe page for the existing places to comply. Because the people of Hackensack who live within harms way, and it's quite a long way of these charcoal and wood-burning establishments, need to be, um, informed. And I don't want to definitely make no threats, I don't want to have to say, look, I'm, I, I care about people, I care about kids and all people, I don't want to send, go into a mailing list and spend my own money, and I would do that, to inform the people, they have a right to, to know about this, and to know that the city council can and should do something. And eventually do something to these existing establishments, not to, um, help them obtain them, whether it be through grants or GoFundMe pages. And it's be a nice place, you don't want to be a vegan, we want to attract people who, you know, they do it in Edgewater, they do it in New York State, New York City, electronic air precipitators, they're not a heck of a lot of money, a little more maintenance, we need them. And that, that's, uh, that's my quote for tonight, thank you.
Good eve- good evening, everyone, I'm Perry Jackson, I reside at one six seven dash one six nine Central Avenue in Hackensack, New Jersey. I have to make my checks out to one six seven dash one six nine, just rooms, just in case. You have to know it's LLC, Limited Liability Company. If I get evicted, I'm back out on the streets, I'm back out on the streets, I have to go possibly to downtown New York City to find out where the housing is for New York City housing, put my stuff in storage, wheresoever I choose to, come back to Hackensack, see if Hackensack's of assistance, and go back and forth to see if it's really gonna pay off. Some people got that option, some have no option. Now, for the mere fact of pay rent pays you go, that's a pretty good convenient option to not having your own permanent residence. But God forbid, only God knows how many people will be accepted into the shelter, why will they be rejected from the shelter if they were first initiated into the, into the, uh, shelter? There should be no discrimination, and there should be no preference or preferential treatment. One thing for sure, I may not have a college education, but if Jesse Jackson supports adversity, and that was written in an article, that diversity is important, think about that monetarily.
Thank you, Perry. Germaine, please. Next, please.
Good evening again. I hope somebody puts on the website, the city website, about the, um, Memorial Day service on, on Monday. Has that been put up yet? It should, because last year it wasn't. Ten o'clock and the address is one eighty-eight, in case people get confused with the, um, the other cemetery that's all the way down by Valley Fair. I, I agree that Main Street is really a war zone, it's terrible. And I think Lowiday Street wins the prize, especially down towards Green Street, it's, it's sinking and it's really, really bad, and it really needs to be repaved. Before we do Main Street, what's happening with the separation, with the source, with the, uh, the grant money that we got, what's happening?
During the summer months.
We're gonna do that?
As the project goes on, the pipes, the pipe. The pipes will be installed, they won't be hooked in, but they'll be underground, ready to go. That way we can repave, do all our other work.
Right, because you don't want to do A before you do E.
Where the lines will hook into.
Okay.
So that's, that's the way we plan.
All right, well, that's what we've been waiting for. And also, um, like I said about the garbage collection, we're getting two months screwed. We did tell you the pros and cons about changing the, um, at the, at the cow, about changing the hours for the parks, and I think you can consider that, because it's a liability, especially the little parks, we don't want to put anybody in jeopardy.
I, I totally agree with you on.
Yeah, I mean, every, every park is.
Especially.
Is different, but that, that's, that's what it's all about. What else did I want to say? Hmm, thought I had something else, but it wasn't. Lowiday Street, Main and Mercer. The other application, the one that's all the way by Anderson Street, if you remember a few years back, there was a big collapse there, that, that, that ground is very, um, very vulnerable. Remember we had that big hole, the hole was as big as this room, it had to be shored and everything else.
That was all replaced.
It's all, it's all strong enough, we did due diligence to make sure that that could accommodate, that corner could accommodate.
Some of it was repaired, some of it was done with concrete, a concrete sock that goes inside of the existing sixty-four inch pipe. But, uh, I attribute that, a lot of that to the weight of those trucks being on those streets every day.
The moving trucks did that.
That's where, exactly where they pulled in and out.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of weight there, so I hope, and then we did have a couple of caves on Main Street through the years. We had the, the one by the library, we had the one by Arm and Navy, we had the one in the middle at Main Street, it was.
One of, one of the biggest problems we have here is from the river from years past, it's all sand down there, very sand.
That's why Main and Mercer's a problem.
And when you get water infiltration, it washes out, and that's how you get your collapses.
That's why it would be nice only to limit the, the height of these buildings to two stories, you're going way too high, and the, the support can't take it, that whole street is so old.
Mrs. Salvo, I disagree, these foundations go down, especially like these one fifty, one seventy, they're down over two hundred feet, these, these pilings, they're into bedrock, basically, so they're not going anywhere.
Come up with Main and Mercer yet, it's, it's a problem there, that used to be rid, the river, and it's, it's sort of compromised.
That's why they had to go so deep.
Also, there should be a mortuary on this building, let's see if we can rent some of these places before you keep giving all these take-tax, uh, pilot programs out, because we haven't rented, no money's coming in, the taxpayers are paying everything.
Regina de Pasco, Parker Avenue. I can't believe you spent e- even a minute of time as to whether or not a resident can look at the camera. I can't believe that was an issue for you to even discuss, to even say to the attorney, look it up, and to tell the cameraman to move the camera, that you spent time on that. But the parks, open after dark, I asked you before if you ran it by the police, have you looked into it? Have you, do you want a fourteen-year-old girl walking home from the park at night, at ten o'clock at night? Do you want that on your, if, if something happens? Because i- it's gonna happen, nothing good happens after dark. So I can't believe that you are going to, without any, with, I, you didn't say you did run it, run it by the police department, so I have a feeling you did not run it by the police department. As to whether or not this is a good idea to have children, to invite children to come to the park after dark. You'll have lights on, but once they walk away from that park or they're walking home, no lights, no, they're on their own, and you're inviting this, you're inviting this to happen. But like I said, you spent time and had your, your legal eagle over here look into what could prevent us from looking at a camera. But nothing, zero, zero, as to protecting, you're inviting children, because who's coming to the park at night? You gonna hang out at the park at ten o'clock at night? I don't think so. And may, uh, be a natural selection as far as stopping development because you're oversaturating, and I don't think they're getting the money, especially Anderson Street.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, John.
How are you?
Main Street, City of Hackensack. I got a, uh, question for the city manager here, I've been living on Main Street towards Engine Company Five for the last thirty years. And I have a problem with, uh, getting in and out of my driveway, uh, about the two-hour parking signs that are there. For some oddly reason, we have a lot of traffic, a lot of buses are not experiencing the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit zone there. And unfortunately, I had lost two vehicles over the past couple of years that, that were smashed and totaled. Unfortunately, I'm very concerned about that street because there's kids in the area that, that, in my area there, and I'm very concerned that if these buses coming down in a high rate of speed, we're gonna end up killing somebody. And this has been going, an ongoing issue, we called the police department, can't get a unit down here, blah, 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 blah. Okay, I monitor the radio and everything else, I can understand that there are other people that are busy that have to attend to emergencies. But you can't, even when Engine Five goes out to respond to a call, they cannot get down the street. They have to blast the air horns at two o'clock in the morning, whatever it may be, or five thirty in the afternoon, where two buses can't go this way, and literally dead stop in the middle of the street. You can't even get an engine down there or any kind of apparatus down Main Street. Now, it's according that it's two-hour parking. BS. There's cars that are parked on the sidewalk all day from seven ninety-five Main Street in that lunatic asylum place, or whatever the previous administration put over there, which is ridiculous, you got cars parked on the sidewalk, and then the minute that somebody gets their car clipped, it's an unreportable accident. Oh, we didn't see what happened. But over five thousand dollars in damage to somebody's car or takes out a mirror, who's paying for that? And I'm quite frankly upset because my mother's truck got, uh, got into an accident with that today, because there's no room on the traffic when you have to get out on Main Street. I am a security officer, I go out all hours of the night, two o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, you got buses flying down Main Street, sixty-five, thirty-five, forty miles an hour, slamming on the brakes because they missed that traffic light because they gotta get to the Port Authority in time. What's it gonna take to look into a study, to actually investigate this in cars that are not getting wrecked? To look into this, to solve this problem? What is it gonna have to take, John? I'm coming to you to ask for your help, and seems like I'm not getting anywhere with it. I'm not.
Well, you haven't so far, but, uh.
It's, John, I'm not being mad at you or nothing because I elected you and everything, but it makes me frustrated and it makes me angry.
Understood.
That every time that we have to call for PD, we don't have a unit available.
Okay, I'm, listen, your time is up, and I'm gonna direct the city manager.
Well, I would like to you and I to get together because I have pictures.
Not a problem, I'll be glad to meet with you. But we will, I just want, you're over by Engine Five on Main Street?
Yes, Engine Five.
Past the, past the port and still. Okay.
Sir, could you just give me your information so I can reach back in contact?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm from Ha- I'm from, uh, New York, I'm a retired fireman, and it's the same thing, I gotta get out, and that's it. Also, why don't they start building portable housing for the people here in Hackensack, like they have in New York? Every place you go, you see high-class jobs, high-rise, fire traps, as we call them, they're married all out of wood. What's the sense of that? Let's have low-income housing here for the blacks, the Hispanics, the whites, for everybody. Why? Nobody wants to do nothing, it's all the tax money, we gotta build, we gotta build. Build for the people. For the people. Where's the people gonna go? Living in the street? Thank you for your time, thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you so much. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Ms. Bob Gordon-Borg?
Good evening. Earlier, um, there was a discussion regarding, um, recreation, the online platform that, um, hopefully I feel that we should, um, look into. A lot of the accompanying towns around us have Community Pass, which is a, a online program which could be used to register for different sport, uh, sport leagues, um, rec, anything like that. And I think it's, um, a convenience for parents, a lot of times parents are working, it's hard for them to get down to the, the rec department. Um, and it's also a good way for, um, different payment options. If, if a family has a few kids that they have to put into rec for the summer, could be over a thousand dollars, so it gives them the option of using a credit card, they could pay it off. So I think those, that's something that we should definitely look into, as well as a communication to, um, the citizens and, and parents. It's an easy way for everyone to stay informed of what's going on, different registrations, different events. So I, I, I think that's a good idea. In regards to the rec summer program, um, I know there are some changes because of the, the pool not being available at the high school. That's out of our control, but I think we have to just make sure that the parents are aware of this and, and give them the option if, um, you know, to put some input in if they want to, um, get their money back and take the kids out. to get their money back and take the kids out, because that is a big element, that they have swimming. Ms. Salvo, I agree with you with the parks, maybe looking into certain parks with that time. It could be an issue in certain areas that don't have lighting. And lastly, thank you to Sergeant Major Sills and to all our military for their service. Did he go home? He went home, Mr. Sills. There's a lot of support, obviously, you know, everyone, the adults in the room stood and clapped, and a lot of our retailers and government support the military with different incentives. But I think it's also important to instill in our, our young people an appreciation for the military, because I think a lot of times, you know, they, they forget what the military does and, you know, that they have all of these wonderful things and these freedoms because of the military. And I know in my house, if we ever see somebody from the military in, in uniform, that we always say, "Thank you," you know, "for your service." And I think that's something that our youth is, is forgetting about. So I think it's important during Military Appreciation Month to, you know, remind our youth about the importance of our military and what they do for us, and, you know, we live in one of the greatest countries in the world because of them. And that's it. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Steph. I'd also like to acknowledge the proclamations and presentations that we gave early on. One, to DMR Architects in recognition of the, the fine work and the Historic Preservation Award that we received for our Hackensack Performing Arts Center. DMR was, you know, very instrumental in the design and, and making sure that we maintained as much of the original character of the building as we could, while making it also brought up to date and current and usable. And HackPAC's doing great. Anyone who hasn't been to anything at HackPAC and is interested, if you go to HackPAC, that's H-A-C-P-A-C.org, you know, there's a list of the upcoming events. You can actually even buy your tickets online, see what's available. It, it, things have been going really well with that. Also, it is Military Appreciation Month, and it was an honor to have Mr. Sills here and his family, and acknowledge his fine service to the, to the community, to all of us, to everyone in this country who appreciates. Again, we hope to see folks on Memorial Day. Ms. Salvo mentioned this again, it's Veterans Park, 10 o'clock on Memorial Day. You know, it's a short part of your day. Steph mentioned about making children and young children aware. You know, it's, it's nice to have folks out and recognizing the sacrifice that so many have made for the wonderful lives that we do have. Boards and looking for volunteers during the committee of the whole, we talked about needing volunteers on the Shade Tree Commission, and someone perked right up at the meeting and volunteered, which was wonderful. Any of you out there that are interested, again, in being involved, volunteer, doing some volunteer work for the city, if you go to our website, that's hackensack.org, there's always lists of any openings on different boards, and would love to get new people involved and, and help us do an even better job for the city. A couple of things on the docket tonight, I usually speak about it when there's some redevelopment activity, and we talked a couple of items on here. We're talking about Waypoint Hackensack Urban Renewal. That's 435 Main Street. That's the, that's right across from Sears on Main Street. That's the old Holman movie site that we're talking about. They're designing and presented data on a lovely project, about 235 units who will be going in there, apartment dwelling. We approved tonight a pilot for them, a payment in lieu of taxes. Just to give you some idea, year one on that, we should see close to a $500,000 increase in revenue coming from that building alone. So again, the design of that building looked great, and we're working very closely with that developer to make sure that, again, it's an asset to the city. Someone here mentioned affordable housing. Yes, we are. We're looking at actively working with two different organizations that are looking to bring more affordable housing into the city. One of them is a senior-only, so one of them would be affordable housing for seniors, and the other is an affordable housing for the general population. So we are working with two different developers to do that and bring it into the city. Unfortunately, it's a more lengthy process in getting these projects going, because as many of you probably know, a lot of this is funded through tax credits, and criteria has to be met, and deadlines have to be, everything has to be in place, kind of all the, all the Ts crossed and all the Is dotted for these projects to move along. But we are, again, engaged and working with folks that are very interested in doing that as well. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Hopefully, the weather's going to start to cooperate. It seems like we missed spring and are going right into summer, but I'll take it. Let's just get away from winter. So hopefully, you get out, enjoy some of the nice weather, and come down to the park on Memorial Day morning and see all of us. Have a nice night.
Dave?
Last week, we got a phone call from Paramus, where seven towns host track meets throughout the spring. Due to the tragic accident in Paramus, they asked Hackensack to host their, their track meet. Last week, at the track meet at Hackensack, we collected $500 in donations, which we're going to turn over to Paramus. Baseball is having its 30th Annual Memorial Day Tournament. Over 36 teams are already signed up. The best thing about the Memorial Day Tournament weekend is Bill White's mother, she makes her famous sausages and peppers and meatball sandwiches and gravy, if that's what you want to call them. Tonight was the prime for the high school. Please keep these kids in prayer and make sure they get home safely. As we honor Military Month, I want to thank all those who serve. God bless America. Holy Trinity is having its 20th Annual Carnival this weekend. It starts tomorrow. If you pay $20, you get a wristband and you ride all night. Thank you. Get home safe.
Well, the only thing I can say that I was really sad what happened in Paramus the other day, and that one of the reasons, I already mentioned to the city manager, make sure that these school bosses, they got the proper equipment, make sure that they got the right type of seatbelt. And between the city and the board of education, they should be looking, make sure that these bosses, they got, this particular driver, make sure that we got the right people taking our kids from point A to point B, because we don't want to repeat all that kind of type of accidents. Related to the Anderson Bridge, I mean, between Tene and Hackensack, the other day, we got a meeting with the Senator Loretta Weinberg-Catton and myself, and one of the issue with that particular bridge, they, right away, they look into and they promise that they're going to take care. The county already got the money, and I hope so this year we see some kind of improvement in that bridge. And related to the time, St. Johnson Park, the only time that that particular park is going to be running from 9 to 11 is a group of adults, they get the permit, they pay for the use of the field, then the light, they're going to be programmed to be on from 9 to 11:15. If nobody runs that field, the field is going to be off. And the kid, the maximum they practice with the right supervision, the coaches, it may be 8:30, 8:45 tops, and then they have to go home. So you never, at least it's a mistake, you're never going to see that field on 9:30 or 10, though we know people on it. And that's something that the recreation department had to take care of. So thank you for coming. Have a safe trip home.
Thanks, Leo. I too want to congratulate our proclamation recipients, Lloyd Rosenberg and Fran Reiner. Fran has done so much important work for the city, and DMR does, is a well-renowned and well-respected architect slash planner located right here in Hasbro Kites, and they do a wonderful job, and we're so happy that Fran's part of our team. I too want to celebrate and honor our military, our National Military Month. You know, without them, you know, we would be in big trouble. You know, we wouldn't be able to come to meetings like this, for instance. We wouldn't be able to do a lot of the things we do and have a lot of the freedoms we have. So we should do a, say a prayer for our, our military. Good news, last week, I went to Trenton and went before the assembly with several others, including Mr. Dibb over here, and we've been working feverishly for the last two years to try to get a new type of liquor licensing or liquor permitting, because we do not have enough liquor licenses right now for our downtown. We have a lot of liquor licenses in the city, but they're spread out. There's actually only five or six within the district, within the rehab district itself. We have 10 inside Riverside Square, for instance, which is basically 10 liquor licenses in one building. So that kind of hurts us. But we've come up, there were two bills that day, one introduced by Gordon Johnson and one by Assemblyman Bozzichelli, and both were successfully getting through. Gordon Johnson's would vote it through on a five-to-zero vote. So moving forward, it's a different type of license, you don't own it. It's actually not a license, it's a permit, can't call it a license. You do not own it. It doesn't go with you, you can't sell it, and you pay yearly for it. And the proceeds from the one we're looking at that Gordon Johnson introduced, which would fit Hackensack better, because it pertains to areas in need of redevelopment and that are transit-oriented like we are, the profits or the, the monies from these permits would go to the existing liquor license holders throughout the city, so as to not cause them any loss. But this is good news for Hackensack, so it'll go in front of the Senate, and we'll be pushing it there, and hopefully gets through and gets to the governor's desk and gets signed. It would be huge for Hackensack, and looking forward to that. Somebody said before that we negotiate contracts. We do not negotiate contracts. The city manager negotiates contracts. I think it was Mr. Servos talked about our exorbitant salaries. Our salaries actually this year in the budget, I believe, went down.
It did.
So salaries are actually down in the city of Hackensack from last year. Some of that may be to attrition. Certainly, nobody took a pay cut, but salaries are down. The fields, and I concur with the, with, with what Leo said, and I agree also with, with what Mrs. Salvo said, we will adjust the times for the park. Obviously, there's no need to keep Columbus Park and Pulaski Park open late. We will take care of that. But in fields like Johnson Park, for instance, where you not only have the lights on the soccer field, you're also going to have a new facility there in years to come, and that facility might be open very late. And to take that away by closing, you know, restricting the hours would be nonproductive and be counterproductive. I'll speak to the camera, and I don't have an issue with somebody looking at the camera while they're talking every once in a while, glancing over, and, and Joe, you were a perfect example. And I was actually smiling when you were talking, because every once in a while, we glance at the camera. It's when someone comes up and totally ignores the council and says, "I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the people." That's, that's the difference. It's.
It never happened.
Oh, yes, it, it has happened, because I've been up here. He says, "I'm here to address the people," and he looks at the camera, okay? And it's disrespectful to the, to this whole council to do that. Affordable housing, the other, I know Mrs. Canestrino spoke, Deputy Mayor Canestrino spoke about affordable housing. There's also another project, which was our project, which will be getting done. You know where the probation site is?
Yes.
The county-owned building? That will be a affordable housing, veteran housing, all right? Public parking, and also a bus depot. The bus depot will move there. That project was ours. We were trying to get the property from the county. They said, "You know what? We like your project so much, we're going to do it." It's kind of sat there for a couple of years, but now we've heard they are going to move forward with that. So we're looking forward to that. We are now in the process of booking the acts for next year's Pack the House series. We're actually moving along pretty good on that, so that's, the dates are already set up. That'll be nice. And don't forget, it's the upcoming season for all our concerts on the green, our concerts in the park, our Shakespeare's in the park, our movies under the stars, as Dave always talks about. This year, we have Black Panther, the other one.
Coco.
Coco and Wonder for the kids. It's free. You come, you sit under the stars and watch, it's great. I'm going to close on a, you know, unfortunately, on a sad note, Paramus, my heart goes out to those people, and I'll tell you, my heart dropped, because I have a, and a 10-year-old granddaughter in Paramus who goes on field trips, and when I heard that there was a bus crash with 10-year-olds from Paramus on it, I almost died, right in my tracks. I could not believe it, and, you know, I couldn't find out fast enough what had happened. So tragic, tragic accident, and, and, you know, it just, my heart goes out to the parents. It's every parent's worst nightmare, and some of these poor kids are pretty banged up, too. I mean, it's, you know, they're going to be living with this for the rest of their lives. So say a prayer for Paramus, keep them in your thoughts. There's a GoFundMe page for, for Paramus. I'm going to see if we can get that on the website tomorrow. So if you want to check the website, there is a GoFundMe page. These people are going to need some assistance, so, you know, medical bills and everything else are going to add up, and so keep them in your prayers. And with that, everybody, have a wonderful night and get home safely. Thank you. Motion to close? Roll call?
Ms. Vaughn Ruddenborn?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn Ruddenborn?
Aye. Okay.